Good evening. We call to order tonight's August 24th, 2020 City Council Meeting. Will all rise and salute the flag?
Plaid of Allegiance, clear flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Justice for all. Madam Clerk.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Janino?
Here.
Here. Counselor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here. Counselor Powers?
Here.
Here. Counselor Rotundo?
Here.
Here. Counselor Visconti?
Here.
Here. Counselor Zambudo is absent. And Counsel President Keith?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present, and it should be noted that Counselor Novoselfsky is participating remotely. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of July 27th, 2020.
So ordered.
Go.
Calendar item number three.
Mr. President.
Counselor McKenna.
I would like to do a point of personal privilege tonight, please.
State your point. Yes.
Yesterday, we lost a wonderful woman. Fran Riga was a teacher at the Lincoln School and Revere High School. Fran was a good friend to all, and she was my colleague for many years. She loved being a teacher, and she loved the children that she taught. Could we have a moment of silence in honor of Fran Riga? Please? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKenna. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number three. Motion presented by Counselors McKenna, Keith, and Janino that the City Council present a certificate of commendation to Robert Lasala on the occasion of his retirement after 44 years of service in the Revere Public Schools.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know that this was sent to Mr. Lasala via mail. I'm not sure if he is on, but I know some of the councils wish to make some comments, so.
Mr. President, I'm going to speak on this?
Yes.
Thank you. In acknowledgement and celebration of his retirement after 44 years of dedicated service to the Revere Public School Systems and the City of Revere, in which he served many hats, to name a few: supply clerk, copier, banker, shipper, receiver, and liaison between schools and City Hall during his career that kept the operations of the school department running efficiently and effectively, special recognition is hereby accorded to Robert Lasala. Robert will always be remembered for his positive attitude, big personality, and his signature dress for success attire. We used to call him Suits. The City of Revere offers its sincere congratulation and best wishes for a happy, enjoyable, and well-deserved retirement. And witness whereof this certificate of commendation is gratefully bestowed by the City Council and the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens this 24th day of August in the year of our Lord 2020 and of the Independence of the United States of America, the 244th. Thank you.
Any councils wishing to speak? Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor McKenna, for sharing this accommodation with me. It's always great when you get to do things like this before the council and, you know, really recognize people that deserve the recognition. And I have a different perspective than Counselor McKenna, as I was a student when Mr. Lasala was at Revere High. And he always had a smile on his face, was always ready to help out our teachers, and was always dressed impeccably. So I think the City of Revere and the school department was lucky to have him for the time that we did, and now I hope he enjoys his retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Not hearing none. I just would like to also offer the comments that anytime you work for 44 years for the City of Revere, it's true commitment to your community. And Mr. Lasala, also known as Suits, I never called him that, but I definitely thought that. And certainly well-dressed, but talk about someone that really enjoyed what he did. So I hope you enjoy your retirement as much as you enjoyed your career with the City of Revere. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Calendar item number four, public hearings. Hearing called is ordered on the following amendment to the revised ordinances of the City of Revere. Section 2.03.050 is hereby amended by inserting a new subsection, section E, as follows: All meetings of governmental bodies shall not commence before the hour of 6:00 p.m. on Monday through Friday or before 10:00 a.m. on Saturday or Sunday.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is a public hearing, so we're going to offer this up to anyone out there that is a proponent. Any proponents wishing to speak? And also via Zoom, if you'd like to raise your hand as an attendee wishing to speak. Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Any Zoom attendees? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. And any councils wishing to speak on the motion? Counselor Sereno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I initially filed this motion to kind of bring up a discussion. I know I'm a freshman counselor, but I, you know, one thing I've noticed is that our meetings do begin fairly early. You know, subcommittee meetings sometimes begin at 3:30 p.m. And look, I know I signed up for this job, we all did, and we can, you know, we have the luxury of being able to take personal time from our jobs. But I really filed this for the people of Revere and for the taxpayers who, you know, when there is important business, be it before a subcommittee, or be it before the Traffic Commission, or the Planning Board, or the Zoning Board of Appeals, any license commission, any boarding commission in the city, you know, most of those boards and commissions meet in the afternoon, certainly before 5:00. The school committee as well. I think the school committee has meetings at 12:00 noon on, like, Tuesdays, which is just crazy, baffles my mind. You know, we want to encourage public participation, and we want to encourage the taxpayers to be able to attend these meetings and say their pieces. So, you know, I filed this more for discussion, and I know, you know, it'll be referred to the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee, and I'm hoping, you know, we'll have more discussion there. But again, this is more for the taxpayers and to be able to voice their concerns and not have to take time from work when, you know, a project is in their neighborhood that they want to come and speak on, or, you know, there's an issue, be it before the Traffic Commission impacting parking on their street, or... Nobody should have to take time from work. We're public servants, and, you know, if we're here at 6:00 p.m., and then, you know, we're public servants and we signed up for it, but people don't necessarily should have to take the time off from work. And, look, I know our subcommittees begin early, and, you know, then people are going to say, "Well, then what do you do with your regular council meeting?" You know, perhaps subcommittee meetings shouldn't be held on the same night as regular council meetings. Again, this is up for discussion, but, and I'm sure there, you know, there are pros and cons, and, you know, the cons possibly being that, you know, would we have to pay staff, janitorial staff at city buildings, public buildings? So those are stuff that would need to be looked at. But that's why I filed it, just to bring up the discussion and hoping to hear from residents as well. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Sereno. I think this is a great motion, and I look forward to discussing it more in Legislative Affairs. I can tell you, as a city counselor that worked full-time while being on the council, it would be, you know, an advantage, and our residents are all working full-time, and this is a blue-collar community, so at the end of the day, we don't want to see people taking their personal time because they want to come before the council to speak, you know, for a proposal that's going up next to their home, or maybe against a proposal. And I know a lot of people do reach out to us when things come before the council, and oftentimes, some of the first things they say are, you know, "I wish I could be there, but I work till 4:30," or "I work till 5:00." And I know things are a little different right now with COVID and people working remotely, but I think that this will be great. Counselor Sereno, it sounds like you already thought out some of the things that I had questions about, so I think that we'll have some good topics to discuss and to get this fine-tuned, but I think it's a great start and a great initiative, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did ask Ricky's permission to vote against this when it comes up, and he said I could, but I will save my comments for Legislative Affairs. I didn't realize it was going there, and I'm a firm believer in subcommittees.
Thank you. Any other counselors? And I will just offer my brief remarks as well, and it will be going to a subcommittee, but I tend to agree with the Counselor Sereno, although I don't always agree that it's a one-size-fits-all approach because there are special circumstances, and we certainly don't want to keep staff here that has to be paid more. But, you know, if we have, we should always have some form of an unwritten rule that if there's something that involves a lot of public input, we shouldn't be trying to sneak things in at 3:00 or 2:30. Certainly nothing before 4:00 or 5:00. And again, just like you, even today, I rush out of work to get here, and sometimes I have to leave early, and I'm actually going to go back to work after this tonight because I wasn't finished. So thank you, Counselor. We'll appoint this to Legislative Affairs. Thank you.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called is ordered on the following amendment to the revised ordinances of the City of Revere. Section 1, 9.28.020b1, establishment of a Human Rights Commission, is hereby amended by inserting the following sentence at the end of the subsection: Any commissioner appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council can be recalled by majority vote of the City Council. Section 2, 9.28.020 subsection D, establishment of a Human Rights Commission, is hereby amended by inserting the following sentence at the end of the subsection: The executive director appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the City Council can be recalled by majority vote of the City Council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This being a public hearing, we're going to offer this up to any proponents. Any proponents in the audience? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. And to the city councils, and this is going to go to Legislative Affairs. Any councils wishing to speak on the motion? On the ordinance? Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is pretty straightforward. It's more a measure of controls. Unfortunately, in this day and age, it appears that some things can be taken to the extreme, and unfortunately, sometimes there has to be a little bit of oversight, and that's pretty much the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to refer this. All in favor of referring this to Legislative Affairs? So ordered.
Calendar item number six. Hearing called is ordered on a petition submitted by National Grid to construct a line of underground electrical conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public way from proposed new pole number 3182-2 near Zero Blojett Street, Revere, Mass.
Thank you. This being a public hearing, we're going to open this up to any proponents. Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak?
Yes.
Socrates?
Yes. Good evening. I'm here representing National Grid. My address is 178 Metford Street in Malden. This job actually has two parts. So the first one, which is this, is basically just for a petition of a 1.3-inch conduit heading northwest, northwest, excuse me, of a new proposed pole, 3182-2, near Blojett Street. And then the second part, I can speak after.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any other proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to... Oh, we have Mr. DeChico.
Hi, Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. Actually, I'm not an opponent, but since National is grid is right there, I'm sure, Mr. President Keith, you're aware of the issue on 187 Beach Street with the handicap pole. So I would not be in favor of a new pole going in unless that one was removed. We had a handicapped resident who was in an electric scooter who could not get by. So I would just like that on the record, and some clarification on that.
Mr. DeChico, I very much appreciate that. As a matter of fact, we had our Public Works Subcommittee prior, and the City Council addressed a number of issues that were facing National Grid and some of our dissatisfaction. So this will be just another one that we'd like to... And I know that we're speaking on behalf of a couple of the issues, but Socrates and, of course, the representatives from National Grid, we would really appreciate if you would take into consideration some of the concerns of not just the council, but obviously the general public, and take them a little more seriously. This specific one, and I don't want to speak too much on it, I know that there's necessary work that's going to go good to the community, but, you know, you need to own up to your end as well. Thank you, Mr. DeChico.
Thank you.
But what's the address again? I'm sorry.
Mr. President. Mr. President?
Ralph, that was 187 Beach Street?
I believe that the address is 187 Beach Street.
Right. Count... Thank you, Ralph.
Mr. President.
Mr. Counselor Zambudo?
I know I'm going a little out of order, but I wanted to ask Mr. DeChico for the address of the pole that is blocking a handicapped person. This is the first I'm hearing about it. I wish someone would have contacted me a long time ago.
Good point. I think it's 187 Beach Street.
Oh, it's 187 Beach Street?
Correct.
Is that correct? I guess he's gone.
Mr. DeChico?
Yeah, I'm right here. Yes. It was 187 Beach Street. It was a communication that came via email. The resident had contacted different people throughout the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
Normally, you know, if someone contacts me, I get right on it, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
All right. Any other opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Councillors wishing to speak? Counselor Sereno, this is your ward.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Socrates, I know we spoke during the Subcommittee, so I won't go back into my comments, but I will just say for the record that I am hesitantly supporting this. You know, I'm not pleased with National Grid, and if this wasn't for work for the rail trail, I would be opposing it, but I'm not going to punish the people who utilize the rail trail, which I know that this is, has to do with improvements for the lighting on the rail trail. So I'm not going to, you know, be obstructive and hold it up, but again, I do hope that you will keep in mind what I said earlier, and I hope that some of the issues that I brought up, that you will be attentive to. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Sereno. Any other council wish to speak? Hearing and seeing none. Through the concerns of the ward councillor, he's asked that we vote on this this evening because of the urgency of the work needed. I believe that we could all be available to that. Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call on that?
Shall the City Council approve a petition of National Grid to construct a line of underground conduits from proposed new pole number 3182-2 near Zero Blojett Street? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
No.
No. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number seven. Hearing called is ordered on a joint petition submitted by National Grid and Verizon to install a new jointly-owned pole number 3182-2 on Blojett Street near the intersection of Jordan Street, and install an anchor on existing pole 3182-1 on Blojett Street near 19 Jordan Street.
Thank you. And this is also a public hearing. Work is consistent with the last poll that was approved. Any proponents in the audience wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. And any councils wishing to speak? Counselor Sereno?
Thank you, Mr. President. My previous comments stand. I will be supportive, hesitantly, but I will because I don't want to punish the people on the rail trail. But again, thank you, Socrates. I hope we'll work together on getting those other issues resolved.
Motion to approve. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Roll call on the petition of National Grid to install a new jointly-owned pole on Blojett Street. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselfsky?
No.
No. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No. Counselor Sereno?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, this petition by National Grid has been granted. Calendar item number eight. Hearing called is ordered on a petition by National Grid to construct a line of underground electrical conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures under and across the public ways on Railroad Street, Winterbath Avenue, Washburn Avenue, Endicott Avenue, Revere, Mass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This being a public hearing, we're going to ask anyone in the audience, speaking as a proponent, wishing to speak? I use the raise of hand function.
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. Socrates, how are you, sir?
Good. So for this job, this job is basically... Yeah, sorry. This job is basically a reliability job and also being able to keep up with the demand. We are petitioning to install approximately 700 feet of new conduit bank from existing manholes 28, 29, and 120, leading to Route 1A. Also, we need to install one new manhole and one new heavy-duty handhole on Railroad Street. We also need to install approximately 50 feet of new conduit bank from the purpose, from the proposed manhole 127 on Revere Beach Parkway to a pole, existing pole 2220, having been already relocated approximately 20 feet on Albert's Avenue. And also, we need to install approximately 3,800 feet of new conduit bank from intersection with Revere Beach Parkway and Winterbath. Down Winterbath, heading east, tapping to existing riser poles on Washburn F and Endicott F. And so, in that intersection, we need to install approximately... We need to install seven new manholes and two heavy-duty handholes, as well as two van stacks of manhole, of two of the proposed manholes on Winterbath.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any opponents wishing to speak? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Any councils wishing to speak? Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. These streets are in my ward. I've had an extensive conversation with Dan Cameron, and it's going to be a very long work that they're going to be doing. They have to install conduits, but he assured me whatever he digs up, he's going to replace... I know we've had problems where he's... National Grid has dug up certain pieces of pavement in streets, and they're all sinking. He assures me that's not going to happen. I would really like to go further with this, to have a better understanding, and refer this to the zoning Subcommittee, if we can do that.
Madam Clerk, sorry, Counselor McKenna...
Because this is extensive.
Would you prefer this goes to Public Works Subcommittee?
Public Works is fine.
Sounds good. Okay. Any other councils wishing to speak? Counselor Zambudo?
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect to my colleague, I do appreciate her concerns. However, this particular job sounds like an upgrade for the community. And, you know, I've been one to take Dan Cameron at his word, and he's never gone back on it, so I would think you might want to reconsider this because it is an upgrade for the community, and it's not something they're doing to benefit them, it's to benefit us. So that's only my... It's only one person's point of view. I'm not looking for an argument or anything. If you think you still want to go forward and hold it in committee, that's up to you, but I would suggest maybe that we go ahead with it. Thanks.
To you, Mr. President, to Counselor Zambudo. The only thing is that, like, two weeks ago when we had a council meeting, they wanted to put poles on Endicott Ave, and we deterred that, and I just don't want to see those just come up because Endicott Ave is on this list. So I just want just a little bit more of, you know, understanding, because this is going to be two years. This is extensive, extensive work. So I just want to have a better understanding of what they're going to do, if they're going to put poles up, because I won't go for poles. If they're going to put conduits, that's fine. If they're going to replace the pavement, that's fine. And they're going to repay, replace it the way it was, that's fine. But if they're going to put poles up, because it says in this, "necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures," what are those? So that could be poles, that could be anything. And so I just want to have a better understanding, a clearer understanding of what they're going to do as work. So I don't want to hold this up. If it's going to add to be, you know, to my ward, then I'm fine with it, but I just want to see if, when they put necessary, the wording, I just, I'm having a problem with. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. President, if I can ask the person from National Grid?
Sure. Socrates?
Socrates? Can you assure us that there's no poles in this particular request? Because if there were, I'd be very upset that they left off the narrative here. So can you clear that up for us?
They designed it... The design that I have in front of me only calls for underground equipments. No poles.
Thank you, Mr. Socrates. Thank you, Counselor. I know Counselor Novoselsky wishes to speak, and then Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, if I'm correct, there's presently in the books a moratorium on digging up five streets that were paved within the last five years. And I believe that Winthrop Ave was one of those streets, and also, I think Crescent Ave was one of those streets. And Counselor McKenna can confirm or deny any of this, but within the last five years, we have this ordinance, it's an ordinance that we passed, that newly paved street cannot be dug up for any reason within. Now, if perchance somehow they find a loophole that makes this happen, I would insist that these streets get repaved curb to curb, not just the trench that they're going to make or the manhole that they're going to make. I would insist on that. And also on Railroad Street, digging up Railroad Street all the way from Lee Burbank Highway, all the way, as far as I know, down to Durant, Durant Street. And I would insist that that roadway get repaved wall to wall. So I would insist that that be part of the approval, if or when it's denied.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm happy to hear that hopefully there's no more new poles. But if we're going to discuss underground conduits, it's really important. My biggest concern with this, and Counselor Serena, your predecessor, Counselor Patch, and I used to fight with National Grid all the time, is that when they filled these trenches after they installed the conduits, oftentimes they weren't compacted enough. So they'd have to come back, and we'd have multiple issues. And Sargent Street's a perfect example. It was like hills and valleys. It was so bad. So I know my colleague Counselor Morabito came up with an idea a while ago that was to have people actually put different color-coded chips when they did this work, or some sort of identifier, so we can then go back. And when we see a trench is then, you know, not held up to standards, and we can identify and say, okay, this was National Grid, or this was Comcast, or whoever the person may be. So two things on that. Number one, Counselor Morabito, I'd like to see that come to fruition because that was a great motion. And I just really want to make sure we hold them accountable and make sure that these trenches, when they do install any underground conduits, are not sinking afterwards, that they're filled properly, and that the city's inspected them after.
Thank you. Counselor Morabito?
What Counselor Janino is referring to is the asphalt tagging system. It went to DPW Subcommittee, and it was never, I don't believe it was discussed. Counselor Novoselsky, maybe he can put it on his agenda for next meeting.
And Counsel, I believe it was approved as well. And Counselor McKenna?
Yes, so I'd like to.
Sorry.
So, Mr. President, I would like to, can I put an amendment on this? That they're, that they do curb to curb if they're going to do Winthrop Ave over. It's not Crescent Ave, it's Winthrop Ave. And I don't think Winthrop Ave has been done, has been paved in the last five years. It's a mess.
Can I just, and again, this is your ward, and I'm going to probably go towards the will of you, since you represent that area. Is, there seems to be a lot of discussion on this. Do you think that it would just be best to talk more in Subcommittee? I mean, I think that that would be the best way, so that, because I don't think Socrates is willing to agree to a full paving. And I doubt he'd be getting the approval right now. So probably it would be best to talk in Subcommittee on this. All in favor? Thank you. Subcommittee.
Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Counselors Janino, McKenna, and Serena that the mayor request inspectional services to enforce the dumpster ordinance.
Counselor Janino?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we had this on the last agenda, but since it was a lengthy agenda, we didn't want the focus to be taken away from this. So this was something that the Beautification reached out to, the three of us, to discuss. So we just want to make sure that it's being enforced. We spend a lot of time improving the quality of life for our citizens. We all know we've been working on issues like road control and the problems that we have in the city. So it's really, really important that when we look at an issue like dumpsters, something so simple that we can really target and enforce, that we are enforcing it. And I'm happy to work with this with my colleagues. I know the Beautification Committee was excited that we were going to put this through. So I will hand it over to Counselor McKenna or Serena, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna, and then Counselor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. So one of the biggest problems in the city with dumpsters in, they keep their lids open. They don't shut them. So what happens is, on a windy day or whatever, if it's, say, you know, a coffee shop, and they keep their dumpster open, on a windy day, all the stuff comes out of the dumpster. So I think we need to enforce that, too, that they need to put a fence around it, that it's not an open dumpster, and the lids always shut. And they should get fined if the lids are open. So that's just, that would curb some of the litter that comes from these dumpsters. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Serena?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend the Beautification Committee, especially Debbie West and Christine Perinuzzi, Eleanor Viera, the whole crew, and my own, in my ward, Ron Champeau is very active on the Beautification Committee. And they went around, and they took in account of all the dumpsters across the city, and they sent the list to each of the ward counselors. And again, as my colleagues had said, the dumpster issue has kind of become an issue where people are leaving their dumpsters open at apartment complexes, at businesses, restaurants. I know on Squire Road, I won't name and shame, but there is a business on Squire Road that their dumpster is on the sidewalk near the Rotary. And, you know, sometimes people have to walk around it, and it's open. And, you know, on North Shore Road, and I don't mean to go into Ward 5, but on North Shore Road, there's an apartment complex that the dumpster is always open, and trash from that dumpster litter is kind of flowing on North Shore Road. And everyone calls the state DOT, when in fact, you know, the reason the litter is coming, it's not because people are throwing it out of cars, but rather this dumpster that's open. So all across the city, and, you know, even here at City Hall, I know we've had open recycle bins and whatnot that go outside. And anything, you know, anything we can do, ISD can do to enforce this. And I'm not sure if anyone from the RBC is on, the Beautification Committee is on the call, but I know, I think some of them did want to speak on this. But thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm not quite sure I see anyone wishing to speak on this. But it is a great motion, and like anything, all of the ordinances we have as a city, you know, we need the enforcement to back it up. Otherwise, there's no teeth. So continuing to empower them to go out there and do that, and support the city's rules and ordinances is always a good thing, and we'd be in support of that. So all in favor? Any other council wishes to speak?
Aye.
All in favor. So ordered.
Next item is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Morabito?
Thank you. Earlier this evening, the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee met to discuss the following three agenda items relative to establishing rules and regulations for short-term rentals, a resolution of action for the regional Saugus River floodgate project, and a transfer to, of parcels of land. We're going to take up each item individually. If the city clerk can read each one, and then we'll take a roll call.
Calendar item number 10, an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for short-term rentals.
Madam Clerk, can I believe there's some amendments to that? So ordered on a second reading as amended? Ordered on a second reading, ordered on a third and final reading as amended. Roll call for engrossment in an amendment.
Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo? Yes. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance establishing rules and regulations for short-term rentals as amended has been engrossed and ordained. Calendar item number 11, this was a presentation by Robert Hunt relative to the regional Saugus River floodgate project.
Counselor Morabito, that's going to be ordered?
Correct.
Place them file.
So, I'm sorry, I apologize. There was a motion in committee to forward a communication to the city's congressional delegation, Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and Governor Baker requesting support and sponsorship of a resolution to reauthorize the regional Saugus River floodgate project. Further, that the mayor be requested to forward a communication and the necessary application to the Army Corps of Engineers to begin a new study on the regional Saugus River floodgate project. And that was voted favorably by the legislative Subcommittee.
Thank you, Counselor. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor regarding the transfer of Belle Isle and Rumney Marsh parcels to the Commonwealth.
Madam Clerk, roll call? Please, please do so.
On the order of taking, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo? Yes. Counselor Serena? Is recused? Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the order of taking has been approved. Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Subcommittee on Public Works met this afternoon, just prior to this meeting here, and we discussed the National Grid installation of additional poles, two poles on Salem Street, Lynch Street area, across from Overlook Ridge. And it seemed as though that they did the poles anyways, despite us not approving it. And the committee voted four to one. It was not unanimous that the recommendation go through and could be approved.
So Counselor Novoselsky, you wish to vote it out into the councils as a whole, correct?
Absolutely. You know, the committee voted, you know, in favor of it, and that's the way we're going to go.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
On the petition of National Grid to install a joint pole on Overlook Ridge Drive at the intersection of Salem Street, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
No.
No. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo? Yes. Counselor Serena?
No.
No. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the petition of National Grid and Verizon has been approved. Calendar item number 14, communication from the election commissioner requesting approval for the warrant for the state primary.
Thank you. I see Ms. Calala is on. Ms. Calala? You busy? You're muted. Let me see if I can.
Muted.
Let me unmute her. Here we go.
Still muted.
Madam Clerk, could you, you're good, Ms. Calala.
Thank you. I would like to see if we could just get approval for the warrant for the state primary on Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, for the state primary?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm just seeking approval. Thank you very much. I would appreciate that.
Sounds like, I think we can do that. And for the record, Counselor Janino is recused from this order. I think we're all in favor of the primary coming up next week. Just a reminder, September 1st is the state primary, and of course, there is early voting active right now. So if you want to early vote, go for it. Go to your polls on.
St. Anthony's Church.
Yep. Early voting is at.
Early voting is at St. Anthony's Church Bingo Hall, rear entrance.
Correct.
Yep. Thank you. Until August 28? The, no, August 20, yes, August 24th to the 28th normal, 8:15 to 5:00 Monday through Thursday, and 8:15 to 12:15 on Friday. Good.
Thank you, Ms. Calala.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Have a nice night.
And for the residents out there as well, some of the polling locations have changed for Election Day. Please check with the revere.org website, and it'll help you with the polling locations that may have changed. All in favor of this communication? So ordered.
Thank you so much.
Calendar item number 15, communication from the mayor regarding ETP funds.
Is the mayor on? Or someone from the mayor's office on? No. So this was, any councils wishing to speak? This was in favor of purchasing Chromebooks for the Beachmont School. Any councils? Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I support this initiative wholeheartedly. One thing that I would ask the mayor to think about is citywide Wi-Fi, looking to sponsors like HYM, Amazon, et cetera. We're going to have a lot of children that may not have the connectivity to utilize the books that we're asking. So this is something that I think is an easy lift, although a little complex. But with the right sponsors and the right support, this could be done citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Hearing and seeing none. I too agree very much, and would like to approve this tonight. And if they need more Chromebooks, we'll get them. All, roll call.
Shall the city council approve an ETP expenditure in the amount of $16,215.65 for the purchase of Chromebooks for the Beachmont School? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 16, communication from the mayor relative to a community improvement trust funding request for the Rogans Point FEMA MAP amendment.
Any counsel, Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I put this in a couple of meetings ago, and it just, it was, it started, and to finish it, we needed $5,000 and change to finish it. So I just, I'm just looking for approval to finish this mapping amendment for Rogans Point.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other council wishing to speak? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Shall the city council approve an expenditure from the community improvement trust fund in the amount of $5,180 for FEMA floodplain map revisions for the Rogans Point area? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo? Yes. Counselor Serena?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo? Is absent. And Counselor President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the expenditure has been approved. Calendar item number 17, communication from the chief of police notifying the city that the police department will be applying for the FY 2020 JAG grant.
Chief Callahan?
Sir, how are you? Good evening.
I'm well, thank you. Yourself?
Good, very good, thank you. Well, yeah, folks, we're just putting in for a grant for $20,826 on a JAG grant that's going to help us with some extra digital evidence equipment for the Criminal Investigation Division. And it's just going to help us analyze more data and be able to download it. And also, it's going to make it so more than one detective can view the stuff at the same time. So it's going to involve some extra TV screens and things like that, so they can go through the data. And, you know, as of late, we know, everyone knows we're in the digital age. And we have been very successful in getting evidence from as a serious crime as a homicide to all the way from a shoplifting and crimes all the way up. And it's just, it's evidence that's extremely, extremely important, and we're able to get it. And with this extra equipment, it'll make it even easier for us to get and obtain this evidence. And it also makes it so we'll be able to use other programs, because a lot of the evidence are digital videotape that we. programs, because a lot of the evidence are digital videotape that we get. It's not easy to download on the equipment we have now. But now, we're gonna kind of get up to the current technology and be able to download and get that evidence and save it.
Thank you, Chief. Counselor Gino?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the Chair of the Public Safety Subcommittee, I just want to speak in favor of this. I think anytime that we can offer something like this to give our public safety officials, like our police department and our fire department, top-of-the-line equipment and cutting-edge technology, we need to take advantage of that, especially if it's coming from a grant. So Chief, thank you for coming before us this evening, and thank you for seeking funding to help further improve our department.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Counsel President. Chief, you have my full support, both on a personal and professional level. You are outstanding beyond words. So anything you need, you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, thank you for appearing before us, and you look good in the chief's office. I certainly support this. This is a no-brainer, and I think this is one of the easy ones. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say ditto to what my colleague said. Chief, anything we can do to support you guys, we're happy to do, and I'm proud to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Visconti?
Chief, kudos to you for going after the grant and trying to make the department better and helping the detectives. So, you know, obviously, you have my support, and from the looks of it, everybody on this council. So we're in support of it, and thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, too. I really appreciate everyone's support.
Thank you, Chief. And we have one more. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly, Chief, I am gonna be supporting this this evening. You have certainly, in your short tenure as a chief of police, have certainly out there doing a fantastic job. I know I've had to call you one or two times on some issues, and you're right there, 100%. So anything that the police department needs, it'll help make our city a better city to reside in. I'm certainly supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Counselor Nowoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual, as they wanna call it, the JAG grant. And I congratulate the chief in Bedford's new position for continuing this effort to try and stop out crime in the city and make things better for us. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor. And it looks like everyone's in favor. Chief, keep up the good work. Welcome to the job. This'll be the easiest yes you get in a while, okay?
Yeah.
Don't get used to it. No, I'm just joking.
Listen, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And everyone have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Take care.
All in favor? So ordered. Placed on file.
Calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Jay Pandella Construction as a licensed drain layer.
This is gonna be referred to Appointments Subcommittee. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 19, communication from Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Ave., requesting that the city not enforce parking or code ordinances.
Thank you. And it looks like Mr. Lampadecchio is here. Mr. Lampadecchio, you wish to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you. Good evening, Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Avenue. And just a quick note on this motion, the way that it's worded there, it might be a little bit misleading. I'm not looking for a blanket of not enforcing code ordinances. I'm just looking for some relief for our residents. So in June, Massachusetts led the nation in the national employment average, and our city's riddled with COVID right now. And the city's really stepped back and scaled some activities back, and residents are kind of, I don't wanna say trapped in their house, but a lot of them are hunkering down and quarantining. So as a result of this, we're seeing a lot of folks get tickets that they might not have ever gotten before around parking and trash. And I'm just looking for the city to help those folks out, maybe provide some relief if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Counselor Powers wishing to speak. Counselor Nowoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure this is a very well-intended communication on behalf of Mr. Lampadecchio. However, I think that, you know, the city is functioning and operating the way it is now with regard to code enforcement, et cetera, addressing those violations. And that's because we've been able to have a crew out there doing that work. I heard one of my colleagues earlier mention a dumpster on North Shore Road, and I have been down there myself several times. That dumpster, I believe, if we're talking about the same one, is 190 North Shore Road. And I know they have left the top uncovered on that several times, and I know the code enforcement officers have been down there. But this communication, I mean, I, you know, we're out there right now. When I say we, we're out there, our department is out there right now, and they're finding violations. And that's the only way you're ever gonna correct anything. And, but people have a right to appeal those violations, too. And they may find some comfort when they appeal them. I just can't see us enforcing traffic violations when people are, you know, are parking on crosswalks, fire lanes, or hydrants, or anything like that. Those must be enforced, 100%. Otherwise, you're gonna have a city that, where everybody's running around doing everything they wanna do. So again, I would suggest that anybody that gets a ticket like that, appeal it. They have every right in the world to. And many times, it's a minor violation with regard to trash or something like that, and the hearings officer will more or less look that over, and hopefully with some consideration for the homeowner of the property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. A number of councilors wishing to speak. Ms. Lampadecchio, a number of councilors wishing to speak, and then I'll go back to follow up. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, great. Counselor Nowoselski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, as mentioned, I'm sure this is all good intention. I can tell you that the parking office and the enforcement has been backed off as far as permit parking in the neighborhoods. And they have been just tagging on...
Counselor Nowoselski looks to be frozen. We'll ask...
Safety violation. They don't tag, they're not tagging meters, at least on Shirley Ave. because of the construction. And I hate to see them back off the code enforcement, because as was mentioned with the dumpsters. And we wanna keep our city clean, too. So, you know, I think, you know, I'd have second thoughts in reinforcing this down people's throats and their natural. I appreciate his thought, but, you know, there's a limit, you know, and as far as street sweeping, there's signs on 99% of the streets. People know when there's street sweeping occurring.
Thank you, Counselor.
And they should be smart enough to...
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, at the risk of repeating what everybody else has said, I'm sure the intentions are good here. I'm not 100% against not giving a ticket for an overtime parking or something to that effect. I never was in favor of any kind of a handicap, or hydrant, or anything like that. Safety violations gotta be enforced. And I'm definitely against any restrict, any relief on code violations. Code violations, I mean, we've sat up here for years trying to protect from rodents and so forth. And we're not gonna, and if I have anything to say about it, we're not gonna back off on code enforcement. That's very important. We've come a long way with that. We're going through a crisis right now with the recycling. Some people have not been educated enough to know what goes in, in spite of all the information that's gone out in many languages. It's still not, we're still not doing well enough on the recycling. But I can't support any relief on the code violations. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, I think I put in a motion probably once COVID started, parking meters. So we have relaxed some of the restrictions and just gone back to enforcing some of those restrictions now. So while I appreciate that, the motion, and feel for the residents, I think it's time that we, you know, obviously start back and try to get things back to normal. And like I said, I agree with my counselor, with my colleague about the code enforcements as well. But I do appreciate the motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like the previous speakers, I would not be supportive of removing the code violation enforcement, as we talked about the dumpsters earlier. However, I do think with a lot of people working from home and working remotely, I really don't see the issue with relaxing the street sweeping violations. I know we did it at the beginning of COVID in March and April, but people are still working from home. And, you know, to the counselor from Ward 2 who said that, you know, there are signs posted. Yes, there are signs posted, but sometimes if people are working from home, they may not remember, and by the time they go outside, it's too late to move their car, or they might be in the middle of work. You know, I know the city of Everett is not enforcing street sweeping restrictions. And, you know, I know with the casino over there, they've lost like millions of dollars since COVID hit. So if the city of Everett can afford it for their residents, I don't see why we can't afford to stop the street sweeping enforcement for the remainder of the season. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso?
Whoa. Mr. President, I strongly oppose the idea of reducing code enforcement. I think that we look around and we see that these signs are there, and law and order's in place, and there's no need, no time drives where we should disrespect our laws. Park where we shouldn't park, not move our cars when we try to clean up our community. We're all in the same boat. We all read. We all know what's due of us. We're working from home. We're all kept to stay within our homes. But yet, we're still mindful that we want our city clean. And I think that anybody who parks where they shouldn't park should be ticketed no matter what. And I think anybody who doesn't go along with our code enforcement and try to reduce litter in our community, and whatever fine it might be, I'm all for more enforcement. And we say it so many times that we need more enforcement of our ordinances. Well, this is the time we need it, because this is a trying time for our community. But it's no time to disrespect our neighbors and our community by littering or doing any other violation of law. Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for your opportunity to speak.
And, pardon me? Thank you. And Mr. Lampadecchio?
Thank you. As I mentioned, as I opened tonight, this was not about multiple code violations or code enforcement. And if you all have a chance to actually read my letter in detail, you'll understand that a little bit better. As I mentioned, on the agenda, it's written in a way that's not really aligned with what my message was. So I just want to be clear on a few things as well. I am first and foremost a huge proponent of accountability, especially when it comes to safety violations. What I'm asking for here is that the council resume the relief that Counsel Visconti had put forth on the onset of COVID. As COVID has ramped up again in our city, so has this enforcement. And it seems contradictory that both messages are now aligned like that. So I appreciate all of your feedback tonight. I hope you reconsider what I put forth, and I hope you all have a chance to actually read the letter. Thanks.
Thank you.
Move. Complaints on file.
Counselor Nowoselski?
Move. Complaints on file.
Sure, I'd love to do that. We could also refer this letter to the mayor, and, you know, the mayor can take into consideration what the council has said, also what some of the community members have said. I think that there's good intent, but again, I also don't want to go backwards either. I think that the relief granted earlier was pretty suffice. And I'm not sitting there saying that we're not, we certainly aren't back to normal. But I can tell you, in my neighborhood, people are out, they're off the street, they're obeying it, and if anything, they complain when people don't. So let's place this on file. Thank you. All in favor? So ordered.
Mr. President, point of information?
Say your point.
Mr. President, the next group of communications from 20 down to 30 are all appointments. Can we just bulk them and put them in the Appointments Committee?
Well, you know, you just took the words out of my mouth, Counselor Nowoselski. You should come up here and be the Assistant Clerk.
Yeah.
So...
We'll be getting a new one soon.
Madam Clerk, if it's, if it's good with the council, we have, we have calendar items number 20 through 30, they're all going to be read as...
20 through 30.
Appointments to...
20 through 30.
Counselor? Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number 31, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order for Phase 11 construction, IIIDDE pump station and drainage.
This is gonna also go to public hearing on September 14th. Any questions from the council? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 32, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order for the Phase 12 Investigations Project.
This is also gonna be ordered to a public hearing on the 14th. Any councilors? Hearing and seeing none? All in favor? So ordered.
Aye.
Calendar item number 33, communication from the mayor relative to a loan order for an alternative wastewater evaluation planning project.
This is also gonna be referred to public hearing on the 14th. Any councilors? All in favor? So ordered.
Aye.
Calendar item number 34, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to install a crosswalk and stop signs on Harris Street at the intersection of Butler Street.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had a call from several residents down there on Harris Street and two of the side streets off of Harris Street. And, you know, the complaint is traffic flying down there, cars that are on American Legion Highway, and they go up Harris Street by the Dunkin' Donuts, and they go across Beet Street, and they fly down there to get to the Parkway. Well, you know, that's, that's not acceptable, really. It shouldn't be. And how do you stop it? We don't have enough police officers to put police officers on every street in the city. It'd be great, but we can't do it. So the next best way probably, and the residents agreed with me, put a crosswalk there, put a couple of stop signs there. And maybe that will help to abate the people that are just flying through our city, violating all of our traffic and some of our other concerns. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilor wishing to speak?
Mr. President?
Counselor Nowoselski?
Just a comment to Counsel Powers. Can we just be very specific that you want two sets northbound and southbound in the direction of that corner?
Yeah. In other words, I want a crosswalk there, and I want, when cars are approaching that crosswalk, to stop and make sure that nobody's in the crosswalk. Thank you.
For me, for me the direction, Counselor.
Either direction, yes.
Right, northbound and southbound.
Thank you.
If you can add that to the motion, please.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Also, it looks like Mr. Lampadecchio, you wish to speak on the motion?
Eric Lampadecchio, 43 Tapley Ave. This motion's about 20 years overdue. Harris Street Speedway has been a problem for a long time. Also, a point of clarification for you, Counselor, Iren Nowoselski, the crosswalks would be eastbound and westbound. Harris Street runs north-south throughout the city. So glad to see that this is finally coming, too. It was actually through the help of Sergeant Gino last year that I was able to get stop signs and stop lines at the intersection of Harris and Eustace Street. So more traffic enforcement down there is definitely needed, and I'm glad to see this is on the table. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President, just a point of information?
Say your point.
On Mr. Lampadecchio, the roadway is northbound and southbound.
Thank you.
And that's where the stop signs go.
I'm gonna go get one of those directional's and stand out there tonight.
Yeah. I'll give you a...
All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 35, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the Traffic Commission to install a stop sign on Arcadia Street at the intersection of Oak Island Street.
Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, the motion speaks for itself, so no one will be confused. That would be on Arcadia Street as you head out onto Oak Island Street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel, facing north-south, which way is it gonna face?
It's gonna face, the sign...
It's going to face, the sign itself is going to face north.
Thank you. Any counselors? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 36, motion presented by Counselor Guanasso that the mayor request the board of health to close all short-term rentals, for example, Airbnbs, immediately due to COVID-19 being unregulated within the household, and inviting and entertaining individuals from all over the country to our community with no restrictions.
Counselor Guanasso.
It seems that each and every one of us have this experience in their wards and throughout the community, and it's really much more than we even think. And what it is, is inviting individuals into our city, into our community, commingling with our neighbors and our friends and our residents, and they might be inviting with them the COVID-19 disease, because we have no idea where these people are coming from, and we have no control to what they're doing or what they're all about. So I would suggest if we have any knowledge of these such locations within our community, which I know we do, to go down and shut them down immediately, because there's no regulation and it's unhealthy for our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Serena.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend my colleague from Ward Three on this motion, and I will gladly support it, because I agree that, you know, right now, we should not be encouraging people from all over the country to come to Revere. I know typically we want everyone to come to Revere and enjoy our city, but having these, you know, hotels are one thing, but these Airbnbs where we don't know what kind of sterilization procedures are being taken, and, you know, if they're commingling at the supermarkets or wherever. So I think if it's within our jurisdiction and we're able to do this, I say we pass it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
Although I appreciate the councilor's opinions on this, I do vary. I think we don't know what type of sterilization is taking place in hotels. We can presume this. We don't have nobody inspecting. However, what I would say in an Airbnb, because the volume and traffic is less, it is less greater, in my opinion, at an Airbnb than in a hotel. We have more people going there for Park and Fly, where you have more people going there to rent a room, and so you really can't determine that. I'm not supportive of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Any other counselors? Okay, hearing and seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
So ordered.
Calendar item number 37, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that any nonprofit which receives funding by the city of Revere and engages in political activity be defunded.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. Unfortunately, during this election year, we have Revere on the move that is liking particular candidates for state rep, which is very unseemingly uncalled for. Specifically, this motion is asking that if we are going to provide money to any nonprofit, or for that matter, any city entity or any joint city program, if they're going to play politics, then I want to remove their funding, plain and simple. And, you know, it's an ethics violation at the very least. More importantly, the IRS is very strict on nonprofits regarding this particular issue, and it really is unappreciative. So that said, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
I support the motion wholeheartedly. I think it's positively an ethics violation, but it shows a disregard and a disrespect for what's proper. And so if there's any way to follow up on this motion, I'd certainly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. I do want to thank the mayor for stepping in and speaking to, I'm assuming, speaking to those that were involved, and hopefully that this doesn't happen again. But this measure should be a safeguard to ensure that this doesn't take place, period. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 38, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor work with the police unions in Revere to obtain body cameras.
Counselor Rotundo.
This is clearly a union issue. I'm suggesting this considering the environment that we are in, more importantly, to protect our police, but as well as our citizens. I think this is something that is used throughout the country, as we all know. I would support this 100% if the mayor and the union could agree on this particular topic. I think we could find the funding for it, but more importantly, this is something that is vitally important for our community. It's vitally important to protect our police, and it's vitally important to ensure accountability and protect our citizenry. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? I just state as well, outside of any union issues, and I know that this would probably require union negotiations, I've talked into a number of police officers that would be 100% in favor, and I've also talked into some that would not be. But I agree, it provides accountability on both, and I think that it protects the police just as much as it protects the residents. We're going to order this to public safety? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 39, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor provide the city council with current funding levels for all recovery and addiction outreach in the city of Revere.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Currently, in the city of Revere, we have at least over 130 homeless people, many of them that have addiction issues. This is one of the biggest crises that our city is facing outside of that of COVID-19. I can't tell you the number of people that need help, and I would like to know how much funding we have. More importantly, what are we doing to help these people? And please understand, not everybody wants the help, and more importantly, not everybody would take the help. But there are many people that want help, and resources are limited, and no matter how much you contact people outside the city, I would like to find out what we have for resources at present and go from there. I think SUDI is an excellent venue, and I would like to ensure that we give them as much funding as we can possibly do. Thank you.
Counselor. Thank you. Any other counselors? It's a good motion, and like you mentioned, it seems as if the support and the awareness around this has certainly dwindled due to the COVID awareness. You know, and I'm not saying it rightfully so. Counselor Novoselfsky. Yes?
Just a point of information through you to Counselor Rotundo. Where did we get the number of 130 homeless people with drugs?
Counselor Rotundo?
That's pretty simple. I've actually counted them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And more importantly, we have a major meth issue in our community, and it's going unresolved.
I didn't ask that, Counselor.
I know you did, but I figured I'd add that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And again, I agree with the motion. It does need the funding and the awareness around addiction and outreach in our community should never dwindle. So thank you, Counselor Rotundo. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 40, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the police department to install solar-powered speed readers between 651 and 951 Winthrop Ave and on Endicott Avenue at an appropriate location to be determined by the traffic division. Cars race up these streets, making it dangerous for pedestrians and children.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So since COVID virus, I know that everybody knows that no one's obeying the speed limit, and everybody's really racing, going faster than they usually do. I requested this, and this is the only reason why I'm putting this in tonight as a motion, because I requested this a year ago, and it hasn't been done. And I don't know if we have the speed readers or not, but I knew that when Chief Guido was in, he was trying, they did something to try to get six of them. So I don't know where this is, but I would like to know. I'm requesting two speed readers, basically on Winthrop Ave, because it's a cut through to Winthrop, and it's very needed up there. So that's why I put the motion in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleague is 100% right. As a matter of fact, I put in a motion three or four weeks ago, maybe a little longer, to have speed readers on 1A North Shore Road between John Avenue and Oak Island and Revere Street. As you know, when people come off of the bridge coming from Lynn, they come down that slope, and they are flying. And that, to me, is a crowded neighborhood. We've had in the past 10 years probably, I know of two, but certainly maybe even three fatalities down there. I think those machines, they don't stop traffic, but I think they make the average person aware of just how fast they are going and that they should slow down, and there just might be a police officer around the next corner. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 41, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the traffic commission to contact Mast dot relative to accepting and enforcing the city's no trucks ordinance on Winthrop Ave. Counselor Zambudo is recused from discussion on this matter.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So last year, I got the city council's approval to have no trucks come up Winthrop Ave and Crescent Ave, and because of COVID now, they're coming up, 16-wheelers, they're knocking down trees, they're hitting branches, and there's no enforcement. So, and the reason why there's no enforcement, because it was a city sign. So I'm asking Mast port to accept this no trucks allowed on Winthrop Ave and Crescent Ave. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? If I can also speak, I think that the same enforcement, again, has to be done here, but just like Broadway, occasionally they sneak through. They shouldn't be driving on these roads. These large vehicles have no, there's no reason for them to be on some of our city streets. So really appreciate you putting this through, and I hope that we can have some support with Mast dot and enforcing. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 42, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city of Revere develop an ordinance in which any residential construction with more than 100 units or commercial development dedicate 15% of its property as affordable. Likewise, a developer shall have the option to pay into a fund in which the cash equivalent to build a unit be used in a fund dedicated to affordable housing.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is pretty straightforward. We're building apartment after apartment, and as you know, what happens is the economics of renting in Revere changes, and those families that are here will have an inability to stay here as the gentrification process moves forward. And in particular, the area that's getting hit the hardest is in the Ward One, Ward Two area. And more importantly, as I see this crescending, as well as, I should say, in parts of Ward Five, we need to do something to protect our families that need help. Part of that would be ensuring 15% affordable housing within the project that is developing 100 or more. And I chose that number, one, because of the amortization of particular developments, and more importantly, it's an easy number to start with for developers. But more forward with that is, if they did not wish to do the 15% in the sense of development, then the cost to construct value, I would wish that they would donate to a fund to move forward with us providing affordable housing through one of several conduits. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Rotundo, you think this would be better off in zoning, or just ordered in seeing if the mayor would work on an ordinance together?
Well, first of all, Mr. President, thank you for the latitude. First of all, I would like to work with the mayor on this. The mayor's pretty progressive on things of these natures, and I can't see why he wouldn't wish to do that. More importantly, I don't wish to step on the mayor's toes. This is something that the council and the mayor's office should work jointly on. I don't believe in hot and fast numbers, and more importantly, when we work together, we obviously gain more. And that's the goal of the community, that's the goal of the council, and I'm sure that's the goal of the mayor. So if you want to do both, that's fine, because what we can do is we can pass this up to the mayor, we can also put it in committee and kind of work between the mediums.
I think ordering it out would be good, and I definitely agree in potentially using this not only towards affordability, but also CIT of some sorts. Thank you, Counselor. All in favor? So ordered.
Calendar item number 43, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the mayor be requested to send all correspondents to the city council through the city clerk in her capacity as the official keeper of records for the city of Revere and the city council.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This just kind of falls into my trying to get everything tightened up. I've noticed a little looseness in the communication arena, and the final thing that prompted me to put this motion is, we received an email from the mayor as the city council. And when I read the email, I said, "This looks like an attempt at a veto message." However, I was pretty sure that it couldn't be a veto message, because it was much too late for a veto message. So I called the city clerk for clarifications to see if she felt this was an appropriate veto message or not. And I found out she didn't have the communication. So that's the reason I put this motion in. I received a request from the mayor, and I tried to reach him to discuss this. It wasn't a big deal, but if I had gotten a call back, we would have cleared this up, and I wouldn't have had to speak at this at a council meeting. It's no reflection on anybody except that we need to be really careful when we communicate so that there's a record of all our communication. It was just one issue that cropped up when I called the city clerk for clarification on something. I don't want her to be blindsided. And so that's the reason for this motion. Not a big deal, but I think we need to all, and on my own part, when I communicate with the mayor, I want to be transparent and have that, have a record of that, too. So it's just, it's about, any communication coming from the administration to the city council needs to be recorded, and that's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Good point. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just for the edification of the council, as the mayor, in the public, as the mayor did veto this, he did do so, I believe, after the 10-day window, which technically has no relevance. So hopefully, in the future, we can get this more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I have two points of personal privilege. First being, I would be very remiss if we didn't acknowledge the DPW for their great work in restoring City Hall to its glamour that we all deserve. And we don't have the ceiling falling on our heads anymore, and I think that that's a great tribute to the DPW. So doing this work in-house, and look at, they did unbelievable work.
Counselor, before you state your second point, can I just order out this last motion?
Well, it would be...
All in favor of Counselor Zambudo's motion?
It would be nice, Mr. President, if I had that last motion in my packet. And so I would have knowledge of the fact that we had one more motion.
Well, you heard him talking about it, so I just assumed. All right. All in favor of Counselor Zambudo's motion?
Aye.
So ordered.
Counselor, do you need to be...
Counselor Guanasso, continue.
And the second portion of my point of personal privilege is that I want to remind the folks of Revere that September 1st is a very important day in our community. Please go out and vote. We have a very, very important local election, and we want everybody to participate in the process and do Revere proud by voting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Janino, I would hope that on September 1st, you get out and vote often and early. Thank you.
Counselor Serena, you have a point of personal privilege?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, just a brief point of personal privilege. This morning, I received a call from Ward Six resident, Mr. Rocco Falzone, which if you're tuning into these meetings regularly, you know that when the public can attend these meetings, Mr. Falzone is here. And he called me because, and I 100% agree, and I want to give kudos as well, he wanted me to pass along to... well, he wanted me to pass along to Donnie Caramella, to Joe Maglione, to the Water and Sewer Department, um, his appreciation, and I want to express my, my gratitude and appreciation too, uh, for going out early this morning to clear the um, the trash gate on Asti Avenue. At first, um, Mr. Falzone apologized because he, he saw it and he got upset, but then, you know, last night, we had such wild weather, uh, he wanted to make sure that I conveyed to Donnie and to Joe, um, his apologies that he didn't mean that he, he wasn't upset and he thanks you for all you've been doing uh with cleaning out the culvert and uh making sure that Asti Ave doesn't flood and it, it, last night, it was great, it didn't flood at all until the middle of the night, the uh, the branches came through and blocked the trash gate. So if it wasn't for that, it would have been, would have been a hundred percent fine. So thank you, Donnie, thank you, Joe, and thank you to the Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you, Counselor. And we have Counselor McKenna and there's uh, it looks like Ms. DeChico wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, since everybody's getting kudos, I want to give kudos to Paul Argenzio for, I call him every single day with something and he does it and I just want to give him kudos and say thank you very much, Paul, for helping me uh maintain Ward one and, thank you.
You know, good, good point on that. I actually am communicating with Paul as we speak on a few Ward four tree issues and he's responsive um like, like none other, so thank you, Paul. Counselor Guanasso, and then I'm gonna let uh Mr. DeChico speak.
No, I'm just saying
I'm sorry, Janino, Counselor Janino.
We look alike?
No.
Oh.
Counselor Janino.
I just want to second Counselor McKenna's kudos to uh Paul Argenzio. I reached out to him last week over an issue with a resident around six o'clock at night and he met me at the resident's house at quarter of eight the next morning. So talk about a speedy response. Um, Paul's always doing a great job for our community and always working hard and uh we really appreciate his commitment and dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just adding to all the kudos, uh, Paul Argenzio, outstanding, Donnie Caramella, and the whole water crew was out during the rain. I was out last night, we had some major floods down in my neighborhoods and they went down there before I got there. So uh, just, I say thank you to the whole uh 880 Union, everybody down at Public Works, they're all doing a great job, it's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. DeChico, did you have something you wanted to speak on?
Yes, just two quick points, uh, Council President, thank you. I just wanted to, since you're thanking people, I just wanted to say, be able to say thank you to the, the Parks and Recs Department and also the DPW for helping us transition to the new location for the COVID Response Team to the Lea for Special Needs Building. Um, without their help, it would have been a hotter transition this week. Uh, and secondly, um, if we could just get out the message, we're coming down the home stretch for the Census twenty twenty, the federal census twenty twenty, um, and if everybody could please fill those out, it's a, it's a lot of money that could be left on the table for the City of Revere, especially in this COVID, uh, we're gonna need as many federal funds as possible.
Thank you. Good points. Seeing no other communications, we are going to adjourn, adjourn this meeting.
I'm adjourned.
The next meeting will be September fourteenth, twenty twenty. Everyone have a great night, get out and vote on Tuesday, September first. Thank you very much. Motion adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're going. Bye.